Bring this special call meeting to order for Friday, November 3rd, 2023. Item number one, approval of the minimum resolution, resolution declaring local state an emergency due to hurricane, Hidalia. Any conversation or motion to approve?
So.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, I.
Ah.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries four zero. Is there anything else?
Just a, go get it.
Barry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, just for, I wanted all y'all to know that that next Thursday, we were supposed to be having the value adjustment board meeting. Yes, all petitioners have, have withdrawn. So as far as, we will still have a meeting, but it should be very quick. I mean, it's, it's a thing you'd be looking at. You'd be talking to the attorney and talking about his contract and stuff if, if he is continuing on. And then after that, it's where, it should be around fifteen to twenty minutes.
Just to proceed.
Right. And all of y'all have to sign off on the, on the stuff, so.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you very much. We went to Tallahassee. If we're, so what, what, so.
Land's meeting.
At a meeting with, with the Senator, took our appropriation list. And so we're gonna go back and cook it up some and prioritize it on that copies on the house side. For y'all, if you don't like, I won't be proposing. And. And it's the same, it's just different forms, House and Senate. That's when passes out on the next week, but just give it to you today, just so.
It's all one package.
Right.
There's some different projects.
Oh, oh, okay. I thought it was the same stuff.
Oh, I see what you're trying to get at.
Each one of the, yes.
Take the packet and you stay together.
Yeah. Check. And there's a couple of typos on there. Corey found his name not spelled right.
Really? It's spelled Simon, but it's really Simone.
The Corio spelled wrong. But anyway, we had a good trouble about that, but he said it happens all the time, but I don't. So we're getting that, we got that fixed and we're getting some stuff back at office. This is a copy already had. But water tower is probably the most important thing. The, we got distribution lines for water and sewer. We've got the rail crossing and.
Sixty eighth.
And sixty eighth terrace, the, the lift station project there. But they like fire trucks, and so I was talking to Andy a while back about with, with the things we have and the things that's coming, do we have what it takes to be up enough to do our job? And we don't. So we're looking at, asking for a ladder truck or something to get up higher. We talked, he says, one of his concerns is down in Park with the, with the high rise there with the seniors. You got somebody there, they can't have them climb out the ladder, so. So we're, I asked him to get a price on that to make sure that those folks are safe. But the biggest thing is make sure we get the height to be able to hit the water on top. Right now, we don't even have forbidden holes or anything, anything like that. So if the state's willing to give us one, I'm gonna, I think it's the right thing to do, to ask. It would be the top priority of our ask, and they always wanna prioritize things.
Sure.
But you know, that'll be added to, to the list. And we can talk about that more when Leo and everybody's there next week, but just let you look at that, digest it, think through that.
It's pretty much just finishing up what we asked for last year.
Exactly.
Pretty much what it is.
Exactly.
On this, this stuff.
Right. Also, we've been talking a while, you know, past several weeks about a shelter need. What I'd like to do is ask, last meeting, we talked about the fire station. We got too much detail about things, so we couldn't, didn't have the negotiating power with the fire, fire, potential fire station property from, from ladder, two meetings ago, when it showed up in the paper what the ask was gonna be and what it was, well, the top image one.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to do is ask y'all to let us, the chairman and I, negotiate with the property owner, find a piece of property, negotiate, go through the county attorney to work through that, and then nothing will be done until we bring it back to the board anyway. But then we can discuss it. But it's just, when you negotiate property, it's, you, you can't.
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, I think, I mean, we're shooting county taxpayers in the foot, costing us money by, by putting all the details on the street before we ever have anything, so that gets back to the buyer. So the buyer knows what we're, what we're thinking before anything's on paper, so it ends up costing us more money than what it should have. So that, you know, private sector, you'd never do it that way. And you keep your thoughts to yourself.
Oh, yeah.
But here we are talking about it in public and it goes, you know, so you can't blame the buyer or the seller, because they're gonna maximize it. Well, they, so I would say that, yeah, going forward, if the county attorney can help navigate between administrator and the chairman, whoever that chairman may be today, five years from now, whatever, that, then they bring it back to the board, you know, in, in your negotiations, make it, make that negotiation contingent on board approval. So then you bring it back to the board, once everybody's signed and it's documented, the deal's done, except for the formality of the board approving it.
Right.
I mean, I would save taxpayers money on, on negotiating.
Absolutely.
So do you need a motion?
Yeah, if that's appropriate, I think it'd be the right thing to do.
So is there a specific property in mind, or is it just a?
Just in general, I mean.
To allow the administrator and the chairman?
And the attorney.
And the county attorney to negotiate land purchases?
For fire station.
No, no.
Just in general.
Shelter.
Of the shelter.
For, in general, right? Or other properties, and then bring it back to the board for final. But all those negotiations will be kicked, contingent on the board approving. What y'all, whomever, bring back to the board to say, hey, you know, we're good with all this, but we gotta have the board approve that.
And this, you know, Aaron makes a great point. Fire station, I mean, all properties, but maybe the thing about fire station too, so that we don't shoot ourselves again.
So this need to be in the formal revision anyway?
It's mostly a motion, yeah.
I, I would move to approve that process, just I think that it was gonna, it's gonna save us some money. I mean, we're sitting here talking about, hey, we wanna go buy property X, and, and oh, we all wanna pay for it, well, I, you know, I say ten thousand dollars, well, tomorrow that's on YouTube, seller knows that we're gonna pay ten thousand dollars for their property, so we offer late.
Yeah, I know.
I already said ten, I want ten. So it ends up costing this county taxpayer more money.
And to Commissioner Land's point, I mean, we're not trying to pull anything over on the people's twenty county, we're just trying to save money by, by following this process, because at the end of the day, like Steve, guys come back to us into the public for final approval.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't think anything, any, so sometimes, I mean, I think anybody in this room wants a hundred and ten percent transparency, but if you put that cart before the horse, then you end up hurting yourself and costing you way more money than what, you know, you could've saved some money, but by putting all your business on the street before you negotiate.
And that is our job, being a steward of the money.
Right, so try to, I mean, you know, I don't think there's any ill, ill will there, so try to save some money by, by throwing the numbers on the table before you got the deal signed with the seller.
I got a motion by Commissioner Land to, to approve the county administrator, county attorney, and chairman of the board to negotiate in good faith.
Land purchases.
Land purchases in general, and then.
Bring back to.
Bring back to the board after that.
For final approval.
Final approval. Commissioner Land motions. Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, I. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
We've got a couple of things coming up. The, the special session for Hidalia and Israel, and there's one other thing I believe. But in talking with the folks in Tallahassee, Ag, which will be the big part we're gonna discuss on, on next week, so. You probably, you know, I know that Travis is gonna go over to, to Commissioner Land, who's gonna go over to Tallahassee to do some testimony later, the next week. There's a meeting next week also, Perry, talking about what the issues are. The number two guy, I believe, from emergency management or homeland, I don't know if it's homeland, but from Washington's, gonna be here, and I'm gonna go, and Mr. Land's gonna try to go with me, to make sure we got a face in that forum, so we can get a bigger, if he's got a bigger checkbook than the state does, that's good too. But make sure that they hear our voices also.
Yeah, so I would ask those, you know, you and all the other commissioners to get with you, to follow their concerns through you, so that, you know, if I'm the speaker next week over there, that I can get everybody's, everybody's, everybody's feelings and thoughts and concerns and whatnot, so we can present. That message needs to be the same, because when I go to Tallahassee, not next week, but they moved that to the thirteenth for the hurricane committee, it's the thirteenth, that that message is consistent of everybody's.
You know, the something, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, he's gonna talk that Commissioner Land's going to discuss and represent. I believe the radio stations are monitored by the same FCC or whatever it is that towers on, to get PSAs out, and we've had this discussion about maybe having generator backup for our local radio stations as well.
Those are all things that I would like for y'all, you know, in private, to let Mr. Scott know, so that we can come up with bullet points. So when I go speak, I got everybody's, you know, they're only on level one from each county speak, so I drew the short straw, so, but I wanna, I wanna say, you know, if y'all got something on your mind, I wanna make sure that's shared too.
Gotcha. Good. Kinda getting cart before the horse a little bit, but just that y'all be aware, this is the, the plans for sixty eighth terraces. What I've asked Mr. Bailey to do is during his presentation, and is to present these to y'all, let y'all look at them, and if you certainly can look at them today if you like, but just a different format, who does a pass, where y'all can have a look at them, if any tweaking we need to do, whatever, you know, you may, it's like, we talked yesterday, it's like, y'all may see something, like, have you thought about this, or whatever, we can tweak it before we take it out to bid, or, or purchase, or acquire any, any right of way. But in the past, I don't know if, if, if y'all got copies ahead of time, but I want y'all, make sure y'all are aware of what we're looking at doing. Basically, what we're looking at is doing a three lane turbine gutter from the red light at US one twenty nine, all the way down until retention pond that's on the rubber plant.
The north side.
The north side, and then it'll shrink back down to two, so we don't have to deal with that, that retention area. There should be plenty of, of turn lanes and things for development on both sides, so.
Also traces under the road?
Yes, right, or, or at sore.
Right.
You know, the idea is to take a, we had to put a pipe across and put a manhole on the other side, so we've got that also. But. The shortage that, that we've been working on, the, need to share?
Yeah, I mean, this, this session, it's coming in the first of the week, you know, that information was sent out yesterday, I don't know if you guys got it, it's forty-five pages. There is, I've not had time to go verbatim, but there is some dollars in there for rule for, actually, not really rule, but counties affected by the hurricane. I think they put another five million into the rule infrastructure fund for those counties that are affected, so, you know, we need to, because it's kind of first come, first served, we need to look at that. There's some dollars in there for, go towards housing, some Ag dollars, but there's quite a few other programs that are out there that they funded strictly for the counties affected, so it would be, you know.
How are they handling the Ag dollars, does it say?
I think I read there was a seventy-five million, I gotta go back through this boss, it was, I got it late yesterday.
I was just, if you had it on top, you had, I mean, you got.
I know I read there was a seventy-five million number somewhere, but anyway, this document, if you guys, you know, again, they'll be meeting to, first of the week, to completely approve this, and you can see what they've changed in here, but.
Is that going to run through USDA?
No, this will be the bill that the legislature's here. The special session, first of the next week. On strictly on the hurricane, well, and the Israel.
The reason I would ask about the Ag dollars is how are they gonna distribute that? I'm hoping it'll just go through our local USDA, type of DAFSA.
I know that Senator Albrecht, remember he came to visit and toured around, had a plan, I don't know if that, if his plan is exactly in the legislation or not, but he was pushing that, by the end of the year, he gives them, they direct it to farmers.
If I could, if the Sedana had asked me a while back, it's where, we have a, a fraud alert system in our office and stuff, that alerts people if someone comes and tries to chance their deal. We're going to upgrade the system right after the first of the year, and this system, it'll allow a person to have, like, to type email addresses, and they can also be alerted on their phone as well. If you have, like, a parent or something, and, and you wanna follow up, to make sure nobody's messing with your, your, your family stuff, or family property, or anything like that, we'll also send you an alert for that, that's good.
I already signed mine up under the current system you got. Will it transfer over, or will I have to redo it?
We're not sure of that yet, but we're hoping.
We think so.
We think so. So, Mr. Chairman, so citizens are gonna have to come in and register, sign up, and get that information to y'all?
You can do it online.
That's right, yeah, it's done online, yeah.
It's simple little deal.
Yeah, and, and the one area that we gotta do, up to five email addresses and stuff, so that's where.
Now, there's a little county deal going, though.
It's, it's moving along, it's where that, that we've completed the clerk side, we wanted to do a test on the clerk side first before we get a guy in the boards, because that's a lot more detailed. It's coming on along, it's where they're keeping them, we're down for an hour or so yesterday. We're trying to, to wrap that up and be finished with it by, by the end of this year.
Any glitches, or is it working out like you wanted, or?
It's, it's working well. There have been a couple of things, and it's, a lot of it's been, like, things that, that had to do some, we would have to go back to, to the vendor, over things like insurance issues and stuff like that, and they would put it in, but it seems like it's doing, doing well.
You got the sheriff on it, don't you?
It's the sheriff's on it, that's where they had gone on it first. And then, then we did, uh, moving, migrating the board there now. They were doing some upgrades, and it's where we had some, but it's where the key talked to the, the people there before yesterday, and it's where they're fixing to schedule the training for NDA and some of those. And that's been kind of like pulling teeth and stuff, cause the NDA's kicking the strip.
I, I, you know, I can't say I'm labor, really. I'd rather be the same way. What about the building department? Does that roll over, will it work in the building department, or are they gonna get some, Greg, do you know if they're gonna do something different on that?
There's a difference, there's a software they're working on, bringing online now, that's, that's more for just permitting, but we've gotta find a way to be able to take credit cards and stuff, and there, we've done that with parks in the past, and there's, there's a service fee that we charge, we call it, we call it a convenience fee, in my opinion, different than historically the clerk's opinion, that we need to do away with that, it makes it cumbersome. Yes, it's a convenience, it's a percent that we're charged for that, that service. And the theory is, I don't wanna speak for, for Barry, but translate, my translation is, because it's a convenience for the customer, the other customer that doesn't use that should not pay for that convenience. To me, it's a cost of doing business. If I go to a store and I pay with a debit card, and they pay with cash, you know, it's the, even though it costs store more, it's the same transaction.
But my business, I just raise the price because of the fee, in the upfront price, whatever, I did a three percent, whatever, I just figured that in and pass it along.
Well, we gotta find a way to, where any department that collects fees can be able to do that via debit card, credit card.
Yes, yeah, something.
Well, I agree with the whole convenience fee thing, because it makes me mad. So if there's a way to find, figure out how to do that without saying it's a convenience fee, and you're just paying and that's it, I think that's a, a good thing. I don't know how that works out for y'all, I just, I, in my mind, that's why.
My thought is that the, the fee should be just increased across the board, you know, I, I doubt some various opinion on that, but I don't wanna, I wanna be fair to everybody, but yeah, at the same time, it's, it makes it easier for the department to do business.
Yes.
It saves less time, by doing it that way, than having to write, you know, all the receipts and company and all that.
I think it's pretty broad, so it's up a lot.
Right, so, any thoughts, Barry?
I can chat with Key. I think it's just that the program that we use is, is serving, is the, is the thing in my Florida county.
Right.
And so it's where that's, that, that's, that's the way, you know, it's the way that they do that. We have that at our office, and people come and pay child support, that's what I was paying their traffic tickets and stuff. And me, I was always wanting to pay cash, but I didn't wanna pay that.
Yeah.
I think it's three and a half percent, but they just wrote that, that people don't seem to have an issue paying it using a card.
They don't carry cash no more.
Yeah.
I'll just make sure I'm reading check when I gotta do it, so I ain't paying that thing. But some people don't see it that way.
You don't need a check, all right?
Yeah.
Well, can you, can you work with, with our staff on figuring out the rights, the warnings, we've been on the agenda to handle, handle that? You know, if we can not charge it, you know, or how do we, how do we handle that, so.
Okay.
But, and the biggest thing is making sure it's available for the, even if we, even if there is a convenience fee, to where the building department, to get them online with, able to collect money that way.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll give a key this one.
Okay, good. We need to talk about our meetings, the schedule, where the man has put together for us.
For the holidays.
The. Some, some people's opinions, are we gonna keep going with this in case we find things after this debris picked up is further along, and they run into things that we got, we would say, oh, we need to do this, and we can't because of private property or anything else. But, so, however long, y'all want to continue the declaration, that's certainly y'all's call. But this is a schedule that Manny put together, accounting for holidays and commission days and, and that, just so you've got something in your hand. If you've got any concerns or any dates, Manny, anything else you wanna share?
You've covered it all.
Well, come on, speak up. But next Friday is a holiday, with Veterans Day.
Can we go back real quick?
Sure.
So on the, talk about the private property and stuff, I mean, I don't like the meeting every week anymore than anybody else, because we're so busy just to renew this, but my only thought about us ending it is, when these debris contractors are done, I mean, there's gonna be places that they, that, that they miss, that, that we told the landowner or the homeowner, hey, just pile it there by the road, and they did, and either it was on a dirt road, or it was overlooked, or it was kind of, one of those, like we talked about, those access driveways, there's no right of way on some of these roads, so the contractor's like, I think, that ain't, we ain't getting nothing ours, but it, like, there wasn't nowhere else to put it. So if we end that LSC, and then there's other situations arise where, hey, they probably should've got that, and then, then we're gonna have a hard time, we're gonna have somebody say, well, you went back and got Miss Sally's, and it was, well, there wasn't nowhere else to put it, and we told her to put it there, or her contractor, or whoever, and that's where they put it, on place to get it, so then we're gonna be ten foot across the line of the right of way to get something that the contractor should've gotten. So, I mean, how do, how are we gonna handle that if we're not under LSC, you know what I mean? So.
I agree with you a hundred percent, I think we need to keep going, just for that reason. And, and speaking of that, but Commissioner Land brought that up, these guys are in the bucket trucks that are coming back through, and I'll get you the two different ones, I think one is in your district, and I was contacting, and one's in mine, they're, and maybe these folks don't know it, with the bucket trucks, because they're going up some of these private lanes that we typically, and said that we, those folks wouldn't go up there, and man, they're just whacking out stuff and dropping it. So I don't know if those folks are going to go and get it, that may be something we end up having to go get, or send somebody to go get.
Well, to that, yes, you're right, but what I have found out, because we're actually selling fuel to a lot of those guys, and some of these guys are doing these private roads, Swanee Valley has contracted for them to come through and get those leaners and hangers off of their right of ways. So albeit, it may be a private road, but a lot of these times, that power line, that power line is on that private road, and Swanee Valley has contracted with a lot of these guys, because they don't have the ability to go out and, and service all these lines really quickly, so while there, while there is some federal funding available to them, these contractors are here running, running around getting those leaners and hangers off of their lines too. So a lot of cases, it's not the debris removal contractors through F dot, it's Swanee Valley's contractor that's doing it, but they're coming back, and they're supposed to, and get everything up, that they not been able to.
Okay.
I think what I have found is that a lot of these cases were, hey, they were on private road, no, that was a power line right of way crew contractor that was doing that.
That's the more reason why, of course, if even some of that gets left behind.
That's right.
We'd, we'd have to be.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only right thing to do, right? I mean, you know, so it's.
I did, you know, I say you keep it going till we get through with this, my reason was, I mean, yeah, it's, it's a little bit of a nuisance to do this for.
The only one I got a problem with, and y'all, I'm sure can work it out without me, that Monday the twenty seventh, that's the only one. So I know, you can do everything on here.
I'll, I'll, I'll write mine later, if it's Manny or somebody, if I got it.
I already called Manny on mine. What days can I take off of the last?
They filled me up pretty good, they got me going to Perry one day next week, to Tallahassee one day, to follow.
Yeah, you just haven't seen nothing yet.
It's time, we, uh, Sunday eight thirty, Sunday eight o'clock, and I have a little girl out to get to school.
He's early. Me too.
Or when she gets there.
When she gets there.
That's hard.
Look, if you got that, just let us know, or let Mandy know, and she can poll and see how many's gonna, we just need three here to, to get it done, so if you gotta do something else, I'm sure we can work around it.
If I, if I give my sister a carrot, it's still maybe fine.
We'll get Commissioner Bobley to pick up the pace here.
Or, or he'll do the bus route.
Yeah.
That'd be scary, but.
But we worked with Commissioner Perkins.
And part of that too is, as we got created, you said we have, you know, one meeting at eight thirty, the next, and it's gonna be a Friday, we can get them at eight o'clock the next.
Cause the hours run out on it, technically.
Right. Um, I don't have anything else, unless you've got something else.
Let's, let's say I was crying about that, and Bree pick up about that, you can get with her, the tree set, if she had called me to get that, I could sit a moment at church Sunday, she was complaining about it, Bree said, didn't that for a while?
Performance that.
On one sixty one.
Her official page to email us, and this was addressed after, she used her official page to address us, and, yes, it was addressed several times.
Yeah.
They just, unfortunately, Commissioner Perry, what is, is they don't wanna wait on the process, they want us to come on down and do it now.
Yeah, I see.
Two places.
I know, it's something, they wouldn't get it, and make no, respite from the county, but, you know, I saw them all, I was like, okay, I'll make, I'll make a mention.
They got the tree debris all from in front of their house, they didn't get the house debris, which I believe is the second group of folks that are picking up that stuff.
She said they come back out, a little bit of it, then they come back, and then they come back and say, well, that's having all over the people at the top, so then they come back and address it on a later date. Yeah. I mean, she's the one, he's the one that knew, I guess, that they were gonna address it, so she wasn't gonna dig really deep, I mean, it's something.
I spoke with her mom twice, and I, yes, sir. Mr. Perry.
I was, I was just gonna say, to your point, it's where I have had a, a phone call, and it was a, a woman was complaining because, it's where they were picking up limbs out of a, out of a yard, instead of out of the, but it went back to what Travis said, that the, the one that was working in the yard, they were clearing the power line, and, and it was, it was being hired by Swanee Valley, and not, not the, the creek. And it was, it was being hired by Swan Valley and not, not the decree that was picking up.
Yeah, so we're getting a silver roof out there working.
I guess Commissioner Land needs to get.
No, yeah, mama's going to pick it up.
So far we've got like six hundred seventy thousand cubic yards.
Their mom could.
Picked up. And I saw.
She shivered up.
I saw the price tag and I'm glad we did not participate in bringing the money.
Yes, sir. It was blatantly obvious in the beginning to me that we didn't want to pull with it.
We're already past, you know, I won't say it in front of the camera, but it feels guilty, they don't want us to share that, but.
Lots of money.
Well, well past our reserves.
Yes, yes, yes. And our capabilities of getting it.
It's getting handled way faster.
I do see a little bit of a silver lining here, even though as aggravated as it is with these bucket trucks that are slow as a snail. But I do see a lot of our right of ways getting really trimmed up and I see that we ain't going to have to go back and do for a while.
Way back to you, sir.
So on the, I'll share this really real quick because I've been interacting with some of these contractors and their supervisors and the, you know, the guys running around checking on these guys. It's not the bucket truck and their crews that are dragging around. The third part, it's the inspector, so it's the guys and all the passenger cars that have been hired by somebody. I don't know what, if a government agency to monitor. They gotta take pictures, they gotta drop the pin, they gotta do all this stuff, they gotta, you know, that's the, that's the slowdown. It's like, hold on, I gotta document that, I gotta document that, that's, they're getting paid on production. So by all means, they want to go, 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 go. But it's the inspectors there that you see, look, you know, the Kia's and the Nissan's, like, where's that cart? Those, that's a different entity that's monitoring and logging their production, slowing them down.
What are they only doing? A little section, then they have to pull up cones, move, it's a whole process. Because I was just, I mean, I had a pile of people on me about it and I was like, and then Greg informed me that it was a lot of us. Like that, like you say, the inspectors and the setup process of putting out the cones and it just takes so long to do one.
The contractors were telling me that they're aggravated. It's like this everywhere, she said, but the system is so broken because those guys are getting paid by the hour. His, the contracting crews that are doing the actual work, the debris removal, they're getting paid by production. How many, by the cut, how many limbs, so they want to blow and go. But it's the hourly guys that are on another entity that's slowing them down. So they say, we're aggravated as y'all, we want to come out here and get after it, make some money, get, go back home, but they're slowing us down.
Nobody has been a part of that, that, you don't have some problem with this one here.
Well, you got two mindsets, sir, you got a contractor that won't get with it, you got these guys by the hour. They won't just last till two years from now, you know what I mean? So you got two mindsets going on in that whole deal.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Mr. Norris?
Uh, just you were asking, I'm just breezing through here. Keep in mind that counties affect, I know we think just locally right here, so when we're talking about these funds, there's a lot of county. I mean, you're talking about Charlotte, Citrus, Columbia, Dixie, Gilchrist, Hamilton, Hernando, Jefferson, Affleck, Levy, Madison, Manatee, Pasco, Pinellas, Sarasota, Swanee and Taylor. There's a lot of counties on here that aren't right here that will be eligible for these funds. But what I'm seeing is seventy five million, it looks like to go to Department of Agriculture and for ag related, it's a called ship rent program is the way it's looking. And another thirty seven million dollars for timber brokers, I mean growers.
A hundred million roughly?
Basically, again, this is all about, it could be changed and changed. I mentioned the five million for rural infrastructure, but now all these counties will be trying for that same money too. There's a hard deadline on this, when all this goes away, which is I think June twenty four. So any of that, but the one thing that's interesting is there's ten million that added to Scott. So, so we may want to talk about rogue act. I don't know if he has broken kills, in case there's any darker ends in his face.
I need to, so give your story. Do we want any deadlines or anything or type of, of the grant pieces or anything, or do you just start?
All I see is that it says this ends of, of June of twenty four, I don't know if that's the application period or if.
Does it matter if you get yours in ahead of anybody else?
I don't know, but obviously we're.
I was going to say.
We asked, asked for it, we were first ones in. And, and, you know, with that being said, I don't think this has ever happened before. So I think, you know, whether it's just us or the other counties that are asking for these funds to be put in here and then fall for. I mean, look at all the farmers that came and didn't have anything for previous forms, you know, and so I think we're paying our way here for, you know, some in the future. Well, that's the thing we talked about early on with a lot of different layers of folks at the USC and other places in that what happened in other places is not acceptable here.
Right.
You know, we, we're, you know, you should have learned from Michael and Ian and others, I think the state has, but it's not acceptable to take it, to say, we're going to wait five years, that's just.
You're either out of business or not solving the problem.
There's also a ton in here, which a lot of this document is about sales tax. Basically, if you're buying anything related to the storm in the ag world or have, of sales tax, you don't pay sales tax on it.
We do.
Yes, I think, I do think there's.
There ain't no sales tax.
You need to give me a rebate.
There ain't no sales tax on people.
I thought there was.
No, not for ag guys. Ag guys are already.
What about my truck?
No, that's my, I saw road tax.
I thought they got that plus. Check into this.
You're a little free here. You ain't going to beat the petroleum industry.
No. Always Houston, most deep fire too.
Anything else we?
No, there's just a lot here, we'll have to dig through it and stay on top and this could get altered and changed. It's, but there is stuff here for rule and if we're going to take advantage, I think we need to decide we're going to go after and do it quickly.
Well, and I, I'll just throw this out there too as well, and I don't know if, if it's a lot too quick. Maybe we use Interfor some here, I don't know, just a thought. I mean, I don't know how fast and furious this is going to come at us and how many pots of money you got to apply for and you know how the bureaucracy is, so we may, we already got her on board anyway, so if we have to have the help.
And we, even the appropriations we got last year, we haven't got agreements for everything yet on that. One of our appropriations, I talked to Sheriff yesterday, he, he's wanted to put appropriation in through Williams Communication on new consoles for dispatch.
What does that look like for the county though? I mean, we've been talking about communication because of the storm, Road Department, Public Works didn't have it. We had no way of communicating, so.
Well, I, I've done, had some conversations, talked to, to Chris at Emergency Management today. There was a new version of slurs coming out. He thinks that's the way to go, so we can talk and hey, Ray, you've got multiple channels. Our issue guys are talking about doing our own towers and, and things and co-locating and whatever. We got to look at numbers and see where we are and then if there's a pot of money to pull from to do that. It might be mitigation dollars or something that we can pull from, but, but biggest thing is, what's the short term and long term cost on those and what's effective? But you're right, when we were in the middle of the storm, you know, we couldn't, our guys couldn't talk to, you know, the sheriff's offices that were out clearing or forestry or, and actually forestry doesn't use slurs either, so, so it's like, we got to. And that's part of the problem even locally is if we're working with a brush fire, we, you know, try to communicate with forestry is, is a process.
There's got to be a consultant somewhere that's not a vendor throughout the state that, I mean, like, this stuff's expensive. We, I mean, you're talking millions of dollars. So, you know, we need to make sure, we don't need our fire guys saying, we want to go this route and our law enforcement saying, no, we're going to go this route. Public Works is stuck in the middle, Forester's over here doing something different, they, this, this, these Leos are doing something different. I mean, nothing against any of those, but like, there needs to be some type of meeting of the minds, whether that's in Tallahassee or a consultant or somebody to say, look, y'all, each entity is about to spend a million bucks or five hundred thousand on their own communication with radios, there needs to be some cohesiveness here before everybody's just going different ways, spending millions of dollars and that none of it, none of it's, none of it can talk each other.
You would think the state would have a, a deal that makes all that cohesive at some point, I would think. I mean, I know it's a big deal, it's a big state, but, you know, if everybody was working off the same equipment at least, you've got a big pool there to pull from and maybe you get better pricing, you know, and then everybody's got the same equipment. So if you need parts, you got it. I don't know, it just seems like at the state level, we should be, be talking about that.
That's something that he talked about, he gets over there.
Add that to the list, we definitely need to add that to the hurricane list about either telecommunications or radio communication or both, about how, you know, like our public works, the guys, we don't have.
Make sure that there's a generator at that tower that's.
Well, yeah, well, if you go co-locate all those towers, that's a lot of money too. And then you got generator, you're going to put generators there to make sure that our equipment is powered when it goes down. Because each, what we have running with the cell phone guys is everybody's responsible for their own generator backup, you know, so the tower ain't going to provide generator backup for every tenant that's on there. But, but so you start talking about that, that gets really expensive to go put in your own towers and co-locate everywhere versus a state system running off satellites and slurs, but I.
Well, the, the other piece that too is, you know, you know, if, I would make an assumption that the cell towers are assuming that there are going to be a two hour delay on power, not a four day.
Not four days.
So, because trying to get the tanks filled up again, you know, that's a whole different issue.
Well, for, for petroleum industry, I mean, you, you got a level of Leos or at the top, first responder at the top of the list, cell phone towers at the top of the list, nursing homes, hospitals, top of the list for generators. And then the ag community, with like poultry houses or, or generators that livestock, lives are dependent on, that's at the top of the list because, I mean, that's their livelihood, that's their money, I mean, they can't, so that's all at the top of the list, so.
But, but y'all go and fill up the tanks or you go to the provider and fill up their tanks to go fill up the tanks?
No, we service, most of the time we service a gen, most of the generators have a five, five hundred gallon capacity on those big generators. So we service the actual tank. But there again, when you got five hundred generators in Swan County, you know, any given week, you're only servicing twenty of those. Then all of a sudden the storm hits and all five hundred of them need to be worked. It don't happen quickly because there ain't so many, you only got the same number of trucks and truck drivers and your demand just went in a day. So the li- likelihood of some of those generators that are at the top of the list running out is high until those support trucks get here like we saw. There again, takes a couple of days for those guys to start showing up, you know, they're staged somewhere else out of harm's way. Takes them, and then coming down I ten, they just ain't rolling seventy. There's zigzagging too to try to get to it, so there's, there's.
What if some of the, Mr. Chairman? Some of the, I know we said concern about power, but what if now, getting fuel to them? What if now that's some of the things they can use solar power like the towers? Any of batteries that can charge the grid, whether they have a generator, that would ease a lot of you off.
It, it, it would, but I think that where they're at right now is those batteries that stored that power are so expensive. They look at it like, okay, now I got to have a generator, then I got to have these lithium battery packs that are forty, fifty thousand bucks to hold this, to hold, to store that power. So some of them are biting the bullet and doing it, some of them aren't. But that goes back to the, each corporation and how much money they're comfortable with investing at whatever particular site. But yes, some of them are doing that and that does help because that buys them some time. They can switch to their battery backup, the battery ain't going to last for so long. And we know after a hurricane, it's cloudy for two or three days sometimes.
Well, to your point there about the waiting three or four days for the fuel trucks to get here, is that something in your industry, they've never, they've never got ahead of, like I said, the power folks do, they start sending folks a week ahead?
No, they have them, they'll have them staged in like Tallahassee, like they're already coming, they're coming before impact. You know, and they're, and they're setting up, but they're not going to be directly in impact area, you know, for. Now, some of them do, but just, it just depends on how that storm is. You know, if it's a, if it's a cap four, cap five, well, they're kind of backed off a little bit. If it's cap one, cap two, they're going to be right there because it's not the damage, you know what I mean? But there's liability for them too, so they want to make sure that they're kind of.
Well, there's a little bit of common sense involved in this to fill your stuff up before the storm.
Sure. The weeks prior to this storm coming.
Whenever the storm, yeah, so the week prior to landfall, where, when they start narrowing down that cone, we start getting busier and busier because everybody starts doing that prep stuff.
Commissioner Land, what, you know, they, we had a hundred, a hundred ambulances here. They ain't going to need all of them. We get all, everybody come in there, they buck up. What about you all, when, when you all have that, seeing that, that surge coming in, can you all get trucks from other places to come and help?
The state handles that, so a lot of these trucks that you see coming in, when those hundred ambulances come in, the state of Florida, whoever's responsible, those bringing those ambulances or those services or whatever, they already have their own fuel vendor. A lot of times, ninety percent of the time, that ain't us. They have a statewide contract or nationwide or what contract already in place with, I mean, a lot of those trucks are coming out of Louisiana, Arkansas, because they, they service storm contracts. So anytime there's a storm, they send half of their fleet to wherever FEMA tells them to go to service those ambulances. Because they realize that the local vendor can't handle that amount of demand overnight. You just don't, you don't have the people, you don't have the equipment, you just, you can't, you can't go from moving a hundred thousand gallons a day to a million gallons a day and do it in the same amount of time with the same amount of equipment. It's just, it's not, nobody can do that.
But I mean, like, you all that, all the customers you have now and they have a demand of fuel, can you all pull from other, from other job or stations to get your help, to get your fuel to be charged?
Anything else? I got to go to work.
Yeah, me too.
Saying, no, I just need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Perkins, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
On vacation.
Looks good.
Keep your face.
No, no, I went up to myself.
Read this special call meeting to order, item number one, approval and renewal resolution declaring local state emergency due to hurricane. Is there any discussion or a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by a model, a commissioner modeling, second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries five zero. At this time, I just need a, a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye.